All rise please. Good evening, everybody. Before the start of today's regular meeting, we had a budget work session meeting and we also met a few individuals for interviews and I think Mr. Wood will comment on that, the results of those interviews in a little bit. And we had an executive session regarding our engineers. Boucher and James has had a structure organization change. Both Judy Stern-Goldstein and Jeff Anastasio were part of that organization and now both of them, Judy and Jeff, are now employed by Gilmore and Associates. And our discussion centered around, we've already decided to keep Judith Stern-Goldstein on as a member of the Gilmore and Associates. We've also agreed in tonight's executive session to retain Jeff at least through to the end of this year, December 31st. And then we also agreed that we would use Panoni as a conflict engineer. So, did I fairly characterize our decisions back there?
Yep.
I'm gonna make a motion that we affirm what I just said and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is any visitor or public comment. And I see this young woman out there, I'm gonna introduce her. Along, and that would be you, don't turn around. Teresa Mays Schindler is in the audience and she's here at my request. We've been friends for a long time, in fact, over 20 years ago, we first became associated because she was my personal trainer. And she still does personal training and she's been a tenant in the same office complex where I work. So every once in a while, over the last couple of years, she would pop in and say hi. Out of the blue, last week, she called me on the telephone, which was unusual because you don't usually call me, but anyway, once or twice a year she stops in. But she called me and she was expressing her, well, I'll let her speak to it, but it was so moving and so important to hear that I thought we should hear it as well. So Teresa, if you don't mind, would you come up to the podium? And I told her, she didn't have to, I asked her, and I thought it would be good for Teresa to talk for herself, for her own needs, and also it would be really beneficial to us to hear her. I pull that microphone down.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. It took me a while to, oh, sorry, I'm just so nervous.
We're all friends here. You can't say anything wrong.
I was trying to figure out today how I was gonna start this and how I wound up here. It has been really a challenge for me because I'm not a public speaker. You'd think I would be because I work with people every day, I'm a fitness instructor, but that's different. So when I called Barbara that morning, I was really upset because the things that have been happening in the world, you know, and what everyone is dealing with, but primarily African Americans, it's been really hard for me. I mean, I live in this area and I am getting backlash from everything that's going on, that's happening. I am a very spontaneous person, I love to be outside, it's who I am, and I love to train people. Being in the public eye, I don't have a problem with that. When I walk in a room, I love everybody, I treat everybody like I like to be treated. And when I'm out, running, these past couple of years, I have had so many things happen that is just unspeakable. And I just wanted to share that with you so you can understand how I feel personally and how I'm having to swallow everything and keep it all down here and it's been really hard. So the morning I called Barbara, it was my cardio day and I wanted to go out and go for a run. I couldn't. Because I've been swerved at. I was in my car going to the store and a couple of guys called me a nigger and spit at me. And I'm like, why? Why? They don't deserve this. But I love everybody. I wish we could all just come together, you know, and as one and just love one another. I treat you like I wanna be treated. I'm sorry, I'm, this has just been the hardest thing for me to deal with and not being able to go out and do what I love to do, it's killing me inside. My heart really hurts. My husband, he's so supportive. He makes sure that my car's up to date, just so I don't get pulled over, just so, you know, there's no reason for me to get pulled over. I'm like, okay. When I first walk out the front door every morning, I gotta make sure my stuff is tight and make sure I'm aware of my surroundings every morning. I have to make sure I'm, be aware of where I park my car, see if anybody's following me. And I wanna tell you this. I was profiled driving through Doylestown. This was like three years ago. And I'd been a business owner in Doylestown for, God, nine years or something like that? And I was really taken aback by it. I don't know who it was, but I drove through town and purposely I went a different way, just to see, just to make sure, because I know my inspection is up, everything's good on the car, okay, what's going on, maybe they're just checking. I drove to my business and they went around the building. So I was being profiled. I'm like, oh my God, really? Come on. I was so upset when I called Barbara that morning. I just needed to, I wanted to speak out and, well, it was her idea to do this and I was like, I was really nervous, you know, but I'm really happy that I'm here. And I just wanna say thank you all for letting me do this. It really means a lot.
I think it means a lot to all of us. I thought, when you talked to me, when you told me, we were both emotional and it was very helpful for me to hear you because you live amongst us. You are us.
Yeah.
And yet you're being treated differently amongst us. And so I wanted, I wanted all of us to recognize and understand that this experience is not something that's elsewhere. It's something that's here. So, thank you.
Yeah, and just to give you another example, I pulled up to the Acme, you know, in front of the Acme in Doylestown, there's a stop sign, you know, and I stopped. And this guy comes out of the store and he looks at me and he does this. Makes the gun, points right at me and I'm like, you're kidding. So I just pulled over, I was really upset, you know, and I went home. I couldn't tell my husband, I, till the next day. I dealt with it as best I could, but I couldn't hold that one down anymore. So.
Well, I wanna, I wanna personally apologize to you on behalf of this community for anybody that's treated you differently for the couple of stories that you told. It's not representative of who we are as a community and, you know, I think anywhere you're going to find groups of people that are just not right. So, you know, I apologize.
It is. It's everywhere, you know, and.
And, you know, thank you for bringing us this story and I think it's a wake-up call for, you know, the people of Doylestown Township to know that, you know, that these types of things are happening and we need to be aware and we need to point it out when it's wrong and do the right thing. And again, I'm sorry that you dealt with that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Can I just address you all as well? Currently, we have 19 police officers in Doylestown Township. There's three of them sitting in the room today. And if you ever feel that way again, I can guarantee you that the three of us in this room will be loved to talk to you.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
It's unacceptable.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and I apologize, if it was one of my officers, I would apologize to you on their behalf and I would like to have a conversation with them. There's no place for it.
I agree.
But you have to feel safe and we, I know the three of us in this room will make you feel safe. Do two other officers agree with me?
Thank you. Thank you all so much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have our support.
Thank you.
Very brave. Some of the things that I think we need to do as a community, I'll bring up later under supervisors' comments, so it's hard to change, switch gears here, but our next meeting is Tuesday, July 21st at 7:00 PM. We're gonna be closed on Friday, July 3rd for Independence Day. Our trail system is open, the dog park is open. It's recommended you have a mask at the dog park if, just in case you have to get in a tussle with somebody within six feet, but you, there's no requirement that you have a face mask on at the dog park. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month, it's at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park. And you can drop off your stuff at 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, it's the third Saturday, as I said, of each month. Visit DoylestownRec.com for updates on our summer programs, most of which have been canceled. However, the golf outing is still going on on August, help, help, 24th. And we have opportunities for foursomes, so if you're a golfer or you know golfers, we're encouraging to sign up. And if anybody has any questions of people you know who wanna be golfers, including our wonderful police department, they can always call me. All right, next item, whoop, no, we got one more, nope, that's it. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the May 19th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns, corrections? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Also, we wanna take a look at the budget work session notes on May 19th, 2020. Everyone had a chance to review them. Is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion to approve them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a resignation from Kevin Kane from Kids Castle. Kevin was a great addition to that committee and we'll be missing him.
Regretfully, he still serves on Park and Rec, but we'll certainly miss him on Kids Castle, so.
Okay, there's a motion to accept his resignation?
Make the motion to accept with regret.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll make the second to accept the resignation.
I have a question. How many people, how many openings are there at Kids Castle now?
Several.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Okay. Are we looking, are we actively looking to fill them then?
Yep.
Yeah?
Know anybody?
I might. Actually, yeah, I think I do.
Good. I'm sure they would be welcomed by the committee of one or two.
Right. It's people that were involved in the renovation.
Oh, good, that's great. That's great, send them along. Any reports from the solicitor?
I have a green board tonight.
Okay, chief?
Yes, I do. One quick thing, I can't remember from the last board meeting, did we vote to hold off on soliciting until we go green? Where are we at with that?
Did we vote to do what?
Soliciting permits. Are we allowing solicitors to go door-to-door or did we decide to wait till?
I didn't even, you never had one.
I must've had it in here.
We talked about permits for like events, but we didn't talk.
We talked about 5Ks.
Okay.
Do you want us to talk about solicitor permits?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some guidance from the board whether or not.
Say no, until we're fully green.
So on the 26th, then they can solicit?
If we're fully green on the 26th.
I just, I had a call from somebody the other day and I didn't really know how to answer them, so.
What do you think?
No, I support, when it goes green, I think people probably still won't wanna answer the door, but they don't want to anyway.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. I would like to address some things going on. On June 8th, I have some prepared here, I'd kinda like to go over it and I got my notes here. Don't usually talk a lot during these meetings, but I think it's time to address something. On June 8th, I posted a letter to the residents from the members of the department. And this evening, I'd like to give some insight into the state of policing as it is today. As an administrator for a small police municipal agency, it is my responsibility to oversee public safety in our community. Guidance is often received from the national, state, and local organizations that drive the formulation of our policies and procedures. I am very fortunate, I've spent my entire career working for this municipality and I'm thankful for the administrators who came before me, who laid the groundwork for our current system that the police department follows today. In law enforcement, the national topics taking place today are race relations and use of force issues. I am not sure that we as a society will ever clearly determine what events are clearly racially motivated, but I am sure that there are steps that law enforcement can take to improve race relations. Over the past couple of weeks, I've reviewed articles from information distributed and/or discussed by the PA Chiefs, the IACP, which is the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the Justice Department, Bucks County Chiefs, PSATs, and there appear to be four common themes which have been identified that law enforcement should focus on in an attempt to reduce race relations. The four areas are use of force policies and reporting, hiring practices, training and education standards, and disciplinary procedures. Use of force policies and reporting, everyone agrees in law enforcement that agencies should have a use of force policy and that there should be a mechanism, a place for reporting its use. The problem is that in 2020, we're in a society that's still asking the question, do we have use of force policies? That answer here is easy, yes, we do. We've had one for years. The problem is that the use of force policies are not consistent across the state, nor are they consistent across the country. Most if not all use of force policies have reporting mechanisms built in, but the reporting stops at the local level. The death of George Floyd has brought about renewed discussion about reporting and excessive use of force complaints to federal and state entities. To date, there is no mandatory mandate to do so and the proposals stop at excessive force issues. What that means is the federal government and the states only wanna know when excessive force is used. To me, that's not enough. If we ever report incidents to outside agencies, there must be a clear understanding as to what needs to be reported. Doylestown Township, our policies go well beyond the minimum standards for reporting and considers that anything less than 100% compliance would necessitate the filing of a use of force report and internal review, but it stops there currently. This approach has worked for us and you would think puts us ahead of the curve until we're compared to neighboring jurisdictions who only report incidents where injuries or death have occurred. Our numbers would skew high and it would be interpreted that we use more force than other neighboring towns, which concerns me. If changes to be made, we need to ensure that all agencies have consistent policies with equal reporting so that we can draw intelligent conclusions. The next item is hiring practices. All law enforcement agencies strive to hire the best qualified candidates and hiring processes similar, but may vary by makeup of your jurisdiction such as a borough being governed by civil service requirements versus a second-class township. Doylestown Township falls within the class category of a second-class township and we're permitted to pull applicants from three pools of applicants. Pool A would be considered who are currently or formerly sworn officers. The positives for hiring someone from this pool is that they've come with experience and that the field training program can be streamlined. A negative could be that the applicant comes with baggage, which may or may not be uncovered during a background investigation. Pool B comes from Act 120 certified officers. These applicants have taken the initiative to put themselves through the police academy. Positives are that they are self-motivated and take initiative. Negatives are that their standards for getting into the police academies are not typically as stringent as they are getting hired. Therefore, you have candidates that are not qualified to do the work. In my opinion, academies like these are flooding the market with, for financial gain and unqualified individuals. Pool C, applicants with no experience or training. The positives in this pool is that you're getting a select, your agency will get to mold this recruit. In any case, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through the MOPAC, which is the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission, dictates the minimum amount of background investigations that must be completed before a applicant is offered a job. Those minimum standards include a criminal history check, credit check, personal interviews to determine five years of work history, any other means of determining the individual's suitability for a police officer, a medical evaluation including a drug screen, psychological and polygraph examinations. Doylestown Township goes above and beyond that and interviews the education, where they became from, their family, their neighborhood checks, associates, we check local, state, and other sources deemed necessary or appropriate. We also include social media sites. We are fortunate here in Doylestown that we can hire the best candidates from either of the three pools and as a result, our recruits become very qualified and dedicated employees. The problem with this is in many rural parts of the state and larger municipalities, this is not always the case and I would think needs to be addressed across the state. Third area of discussion across the country is training and education standards. Initial training under the Act 120, which is what you need to do to become a police officer, is 919 hours of training through the police academy. After graduation, employment officers have recertification requirements. The state mandates the following. 12 hours of continuing education each year, which consists of MOPAC-developed training and continuing law enforcement education courses, firearms qualification, CPR, and first aid. Department mandated recertification, which is above and beyond what they require is what we do every year and is required in order for you to maintain your certification in this police department. We have a use of force review policy every year, it's done in the spring. We have empty-handed control taxes done annually. Defensive tactics are done twice a year, we do handcuffing in the spring, we do less lethal weapons, which are your OC spray, we do it every two years, impact weapons every year in the fall, which are your batons, your striking instruments, your less lethal extended-range weapons, which would be your beanbag projectiles and your tasers, they're done annually. Beanbags are done in the fall and tasers are done in the spring. The lethal weapons, we do our handguns, shotguns, and patrol rifles two times a year, where the state only requires once. Our officers have crisis intervention training and we're working on de-escalation training throughout the entire department. And this was set up well before the death of Mr. George Floyd. Last and final area of discussion across the country today is disciplinary procedures and what I also include termination. Discipline in the workplace is not specific to law enforcement, it can be detrimental to any profession. And discipline has two distinct meanings. Positive discipline is the quality of being able to behave and work in a controlled way, which involves obeying rules and standards. Negative discipline is the practice of making people obey rules for standards of behavior and punishing them for when they do not. This form of discipline often brings about the most resistance. Positive discipline is when every organization tries to achieve and when that fails, administrators are left to deal with negative discipline. Law enforcement can strive to be an organization being built around positive discipline, but cannot be done without proper supervision, which is brought about by having the correct number of competent supervisors. And studies and leadership manuals identify that the ideal span of control for effective supervision to be four to five individuals with no more than eight. Here in Doylestown Township, we are fortunate to fall within the ideal range and we need to maintain, remain committed to these numbers so that we can continue to effectively monitor and modify the behavior of our officers and the work product of our employees. Small rural towns in the state still have officers with no supervision, while in contrast, larger towns and cities lose the ability to effectively control their employees because they have lost the span of control. When positive discipline fails and negative discipline, well, excuse me, when positive discipline fails and negative discipline is necessary, there are multiple levels of discipline that can be handed down. These range from counseling, verbal reprimand, written reprimand, suspension, reduction in rank, and even termination. First-line supervisors, which is the key to the department, must be willing to take and stand and hold the employee accountable and report the misconduct. Failure to do so allows the bad employee to remain unchecked. Administrators must ensure that all cases of discipline are properly investigated and a determination made as to whether the conduct was or was not a violation of policy or procedure. All complaints should have a clear and concise finding, either to sustain the complaint or exonerate the employee. Even after a thorough investigation substantiate that negative discipline is appropriate, two key factors often dictate whether these findings will remain with the officer. And these are the touchy parts coming up when it talks about labor unions. Labor unions and collective bargaining agreements often dictate what may or may not remain in a personnel file. Many contracts call for reckoning periods for certain disciplinary findings. Following the reckoning periods, the findings are removed from the employee's personnel file. Contracts also dictate the manner for which disciplinary hearings are held. Many disciplinary hearings are heard through binding arbitration where settlements frequently occur. The Police Tenure Act, which is afforded to law enforcement officers in Pennsylvania, dictates the process for suspensions, reduction in rank, and termination for sworn officers. The Act affords officers to be suspended or fired and a right to hearing and appeals process through the Court of Common Pleas. Although I agree with the basic process, I believe that they tend to make it difficult to properly discipline and/or terminate a bad employee. Excessive force, what is it and when should it be tolerated? Just yesterday, I received an email and learned that the PA Chiefs joined a coalition formed by Attorney General Shapiro, which ties excessive force issues to hiring reform. I personally believe that the use of excessive force has no place in law enforcement and if substantiated, should be a terminable offense. The reform will only limit officers' ability to switch departments and not necessarily eliminate its occurrence. Failure to train and failure to supervise have always been and will always be the two greatest areas of police liability. When competent and proven training methods fail and we have provided adequate supervision and documentation, then it is time to cut ties with the employee and terminate the Where we go from here? I think we stay the course. We have good policies in place, we have good employees currently, we need to maintain our staffing so that we can continue to actively supervise and make sure that when we get complaints, it's reviewed. Every officer deserves the right to be heard, every officer deserves the right to be cleared if they're unjustly accused of somebody, but they also need to understand, and I don't think there's a person in our police department that doesn't realize, if they do something wrong, whether it be excessive force, race relations, they're gonna be held accountable. I think that covers a lot. If I rambled on, I apologize, but I thought it was important to elaborate on my letter to the residents.
You touched on all the issues that are being bandied about in the legislature and also within Senator Scott's proposal in the federal government and also what's circulating through PSATs and, you know, Fred Horan and Ben Salem and, so I thank you for taking the time to give us, you know, your perspective and also a review of your policies, our policies, and how to best implement them. And then your concerns going forward, how do you get rid of the bad guy? You know, which is, and our hands are kinda hampered by the Police Tenure Acts and the current PBA contracts. Maybe now, maybe now and going forward, we're gonna have some lessening of the restrictions of the Police Tenure Act and then we'll have a more balanced approach to negotiating the PBA contracts. But specifically, I think it starts with sharing information and making that accessible to every, all the police departments, you know, as these police officers just move from one jurisdiction to another without any constraints and without any review. So I think that's.
One other thing I forgot to mention in there is, they're talking, a lot of the talk is about excessive force. It's also important to realize, and I think that in all fairness, our policy will probably be changed ever so slightly, where off the top of my head, there is. be changed ever so slightly, where off the top of my head, there is no mechanism in place for me right now. If, say, we have a use of force situation where an officer draws his taser as a, as a use of, during the use of force continuum, and the officer is able to de-escalate the decision, the situation through his verbal skills, and he returns the taser to his holster without discharging it, I don't have a mechanism in place for reporting that. I think what I want to do is add that where it also becomes a use of force situation where mandates reporting so that I can show that we're using and going up and down in the use of force and that we're not always using these weapons when they're taken out. So I think that's one slight modification. Again, I'm proud to say, and I think I thank Steve White for this, a lot of, we're, we're ahead of the curve. We really are, so.
Well, I have to, I'm, I'll be remiss if I don't mention the provision and the regulations of this department that would don't allow chokeholds, but as a last resort to protect a life, chokeholds are part of our regulations. Do you want to speak to that?
There's some, it's 2020 and there's still police departments across the country that allow chokeholds to be used as a controlled tactic in non-lethal situations. We have never, I can't think of the last time in our township that we've ever been able to use them as it, the only time they're permitted to be used in Doylestown Township is in a deadly force situation. In other words, if I'm wrestling with somebody on the ground, that person, it's either me or him, and I can't get to my weapon, I'm permitted to do whatever I need to save my life. If it, if I have to choke them, it's, it's, it would be justified in Doylestown Township under the last circumstances. So in other words, it would be no different for me using my firearm versus using the chokehold. But we are in no way, shape, or form allowed to use it to control somebody. There is too many variables that take place where a simple control could turn into a deadly force situation where it's not warranted.
Okay, thank you for that. But it's something that we're going to be, continue to look at.
If, I, I think what we need to do is, is follow suit with the national standards. I, I understand that there's a lot of things in the news right now, but I think the misconception right now is that they're being eliminated altogether. That, I don't believe that to be the case. I don't blink anybody out there who wants to take something away that could save a police officer's life.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Chief Logan, if possible, could you provide a copy of your speech tonight? It had a lot of great information that is new to me and how you, the departments run in comparison to other departments. I would appreciate having that for reference if possible.
I could provide you some.
Thank you.
Great, anybody else?
Yeah, I would like to add on that. First of all, thank you for your statement that you put out. It was really helpful to, to go into that kind of detail about the policies that your, your department is doing. But I did, I did have some questions about the policies that you have and whether we can all get a copy of your policies on using body cameras and the use of force policies, just the written ones, the ones that you follow day to day, as well as any discharge of weapons policies, just so that we can all get a better understanding to have that distributed.
I can supply that to you.
That would be wonderful, thanks.
Good?
I'm good, thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I'm good, thank you. Township engineer, have anything? Oh, yes, he does.
On the floor? I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Pardon?
Do I have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed, I apologize. You have before you my recommendation for the award of the Central Park Lighting polls, the actual polls and fixtures themselves. If you recall, last month, or back in May, the, the board awarded the contract to install those fixtures to U.S. Solutions and to supplying the foundations. Along with Boucher and James, we solicited proposals from electrical suppliers to purchase the poles and lights. We procured three proposals. These are CoStar's purchases. They are current, these companies are on a current CoStar's contract and they're CoStar's vendors. The low bid for the supply of the fixtures and the poles is Turtle and Hughes Incorporated, based out of Lyndon, New Jersey. The amount for that purchase is $95,904. Just a note that the total cost for this project was, comes in at just under 100 and, just under $200,000. We had budgeted $235,000 overall, so we're approximately $36,000 and change under budget for this project. So I'm asking the board's approval to award the, to allow us to purchase the material via CoStar's contract, purchase from Turtle and Hughes for $95,904, please.
Is there a motion to approve Turtles and Hughes for the quoted amount for the, the Central Park lighting, the $95,904?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
It's a quick question. Who installs them? Do we?
U.S. Solutions, the award to U.S. Solutions.
We did that already.
You did that already, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Just want to, all right, manager?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, supervisors, and I'm going to jump in because I want to follow what Teresa Meis Schindler spoke to. Actually, early that morning, before she called me, I had decided to, you know, resurrect a training I had a few years ago called implicit bias training. It, it is, it, it was helpful to me because I'm a neutral. I've been a neutral for 25 years and part of the skill of being a neutral is understanding any biases we have internally, unconsciously, but mostly implicit bias is unconscious, regardless of what we profess to believe, regardless of how we act. We have biases that we need to be able to identify because it forms how we proceed in life. Implicit biases come from our, you know, place of origins. They come, they start to develop when we're, when we're born and when we grow up and, and we don't think about them, but they're there. I was, I dare say, say that some of these biases occur anthropologically. Women who with heart-shaped faces are more attracted to men. Men with big, strong jaws are more attracted to women. Why is that? Because of procreation. That goes back thousands of years, not just recently. So this is, this is, and some is a positive bias, but it's still nonetheless an implicit bias. We don't think about it. We look at a pretty face, oh, you got a pretty face. But we're looking at a pretty face because it's a heart-shaped face. It's just one of those things, but we, from, from time to time, we might be internally, you know, you know, at odds with what seems wrong, but we're not quite sure why. And I think it would be helpful to all of us to have that discussion amongst ourselves with a kind of a quasi-training, because training for implicit biases is days. So we could have an abbreviated form, have it for us, have it for administration, have it for our police department, and then once we have a good idea what it's all about, we open it up to the community. We have the same discussion with our community. I think it would be helpful not only to us as individuals, satisfying our ethical obligation to be good people and good servants and good stewards for our, for our people, but it'd also help us with our own internal discussions. We have, we have questions in our minds and our hearts, and I think if we recognize what unconscious bias we have, we might be able to better have those conversations with ourselves than with our community and our friends and families, the people that are closest to us. It's, it's really fascinating, it's very interesting, and I can tell you, as many years as we, judges on the bench, people like me who've been neutral for 25 years, it's, I still have to question where, where, where I'm coming from on any particular question. I still do, and it's a useful conversation to have. So I would propose, I've spoken to Barbara Simmons, who's Executive Director of the Peace Center, and she's willing to help navigate this discussion. Not, not for, she's out for, for leave for a bit, but she said she would be willing to do that, and I just wanted to get the impression of the board if this is something that we think might be helpful not only to us, administration, our police, and also to the community.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Sure, sure. Chief, you would, you would, we're not going to mandate it, but.
Yeah, I think it has to remain as an optional.
It's an invitation.
Yeah.
You know, for, for, for our people in blue and for our staff and administration who want to become illuminated. I mean, it's, not doing it, it's okay, but it's, it's just fascinating. It's a fascinating exercise. Okay, great, then I'll, I'll work on setting that up. Thank you. That's, that's all I have. What do you, Nancy?
Sure. Bike and hike met and TAB met. They're moving forward with their agenda and excited to start to put, move forward and, and meet. We're still doing Zoom meetings. I know Bike and Hike is trying to work with all the different municipalities. Stephanie's been really involved as well in terms of having a larger plan. I know there's the, I'll say this, but the website's coming out, and I think the park and rec piece of it will also help connect and understand people. Thank you for clarifying. Any questions about masks at the dog park, Barbara? Appreciate that. Also wanted to thank the chief and all the officers for all the extra time and coordination with the surrounding community, for all the different rallies and protests, and really representing us in a way that we can all be proud. Especially want to thank them for the escaped tortoise, Tory. There were some nice photos. I think it ended up at the Sears.
The tortoise capture is back here.
It was 100, I thought that 110-pound African tortoise was captured, so thank you very much. That was sort of fun.
Thank you.
Among all the heaviness, I loved seeing something fun like that, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Jen?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, and congratulations to all the graduates for 2020, so, thank you.
Was one of yours?
Mine's one of them.
Yeah, congratulations to you, mom.
It's been a wonky, it's a wonky year, so, yeah.
Yeah, thank goodness.
First, I would like to, to take a moment to thank again the police force for what they've been doing so far. There's been a lot of challenges. There's been, I, I know you probably feel, I can just assume that you feel that there's a lot of eyes on you right now, and that's got to be a lot of pressure. So I appreciate your forthcoming when it comes to our policies and procedures and your continued work with the surrounding communities. But I'd also like to, to start out with something a little bit of fun. It's kind of a, a history in Doylestown Township that I didn't know about until just, just recently. I was researching slavery in Doylestown Township, and I'm just going to go through a quick history of, of what, what I discovered and share with you. In 1780, Pennsylvania was the first democratic government to pass an abolishment law to slavery in the world, in the world. But it didn't accomplish everything. There were still slaves that were held in Pennsylvania for a very, very long time afterwards because of certain loopholes that were put in place. These kept people enslaved for decades after that law. Bucks County's last holdout was a woman named Anna Baring, who owned three people. They were listed as girl age 10, girl age 8, and boy age 6 in the records. There was no name attached to these children. She was the last holdout in Bucks County, and she released them from slavery in 1826. Because of these loopholes, these children were put directly into indentured servitude until they turned 28 years old. It's a really long time to be enslaved after you were freed. The interesting thing is the Emancipation Proclamation took effect in 1863, maybe like about 20 years after that little boy was able to be freed from indentured servitude. But the whole country didn't know about this. The whole country didn't know about this. Southern states didn't know until 1865, two and a half years later, when Union soldiers went into Texas and let them know about the Emancipation Proclamation, freeing the bonded people there. This date was June 19th, 1865, and it used to be a very big celebration in the U.S. There were, there were a lot of people that used to celebrate the freedom, and we celebrate the Fourth of July, our independence. This was, this was almost an equivalent independence, until Jim Crow came along and other, other economic inequities put a damper on that. And we saw resurgence in, in Juneteenth as a celebration during the civil rights movement, but it was never quite the same. I think with the events today, it's more important than ever to acknowledge that we should be celebrating the growth of our nation, the growth, growth of us as a people, in moving towards a more perfect union where all men can be created equal and seen created equal. So I put forth a resolution stating, whereas Juneteenth is recognized as the oldest commemoration of Black economics liberation in the United States, whereas the last people legally enslaved in Bucks County were freed from slavery in Doylestown Township in 1824 into indentured servitude for decades longer, whereas Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1st, 1863, freeing enslaved people in the South. However, Southern slave owners ignored that order. On June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas and enforced the President's order, freeing the slaves two and a half years later after it was decreed. This day has since become known as Juneteenth. Whereas throughout our other systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, and mass incarceration, true equity has yet to be realized for Black Americans. Whereas violence continues to disproportionately claim the lives of so many Black persons in America, as witnessed by the senseless deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmet Aubrey, and countless others as a result of these inequities. Whereas Juneteenth was recognized as a state holiday in Pennsylvania on June 19th, 2019, and that is in perpetuity. And then it continues to say, now there be resolved that Doylestown Township supervisors designate June 19th, 2020 as Juneteenth Freedom Day, recognize the historical significance of Juneteenth Freedom Day in Doylestown Township, and support the continued nationwide celebration of Juneteenth to provide an opportunity for the people of the United States to learn more about the past and to better understand the experiences of the Black community that have shaped the United States, and to rededicate ourselves to work towards freedom and equity for all. Now, I realize I put this forth in front of you very recently, right before this meeting, and that didn't give you much time to absorb it, but it's a very simple resolution. It's a resolution just saying, let's celebrate the, the freedom of people in the Black community and, and join not only Pennsylvania, but several states in the United States, the majority of states in the United States, recognizing Juneteenth.
I appreciate the resolution you put together, but like I said to you before the meeting, you know, I, I would not approve any resolution that landed in front of me three minutes before the meeting started because I take my time when we put forth resolutions, and it is a state holiday. I completely support Juneteenth and, and recognize it for the significance that it is, but for the reason that I literally just got this, I'm, I'm not going to vote on this tonight.
Okay, is there a motion to table?
I can make, we can make a motion to table, sure. I'm fine with that.
All right.
I'll make a motion to table.
I would second that. I just got it as well, so I'd, but just to, like I said, I think it's a wonderful idea to, to recognize all people, and I think, you know, Jen, thank you for taking all your time to research and present that, which I think is great. But yeah, I'd like to just do a little more research before I do something like this.
All right, is there a motion and a second, all in favor, and the motion to table?
Aye.
Aye.
What was your vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Through the filter.
All right, let me, okay, Ryan?
I have a couple more.
Oh, one of your party.
I'm sorry.
All right, I thought you were done.
No, that was a long one, and, and thank you for your consideration on that. I just wanted to say, as far as the protests go, we have seen a lot going on in our communities, and there's a lot of misunderstandings going on with what the, what the protests are, what they're for at this moment. I see a lot of social media posts saying, Black Lives Matter, why not? All Lives Matter, why not? This Live Matter. And I just wanted to say that, that's not really the purpose of the phrase, Black Lives Matter. It's kind of similar as the idea of Save the Rainforest isn't saying, you know, the rest of the world can burn, it's saying that this is an area that we need to focus on because there are inequities. So I just wanted to make that clear, that this is, that, that it isn't against a police. It's not, it's not against the police, it's not against white people, it's not against anyone in particular. It's, it's, it's all about the implicit bias, the systematic racism, and, and it just, it's people wanting to have that at least recognized and. and justice for when injustice is done. Also, I wanted to reinforce that support for Black Lives Matter does not mean not supporting the police force. This is very important because they're often pitted against each other. I see that in social media an awful lot. We can have two thoughts at the same time. We can rage against the murderers of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Philando Castile, and still support the good officers and all the hard work that they're doing to protect and serve our people. There's also a misunderstanding about Antifa. We had a protest in Doylestown Borough at the beginning of the month, and there was all the social media talk about Antifa coming and bashing in windows and causing chaos and destruction. But it turned out that we're seeing this throughout the nation, throughout these protests, that this is a group posing as Antifa. It's actually a radical, right-wing, white supremacy.
Jen, I really can't believe that you're like -- this is -- you're a supervisor. You serve and protect Doylestown Township. Not -- no, now you're talking about white supremacy, and like, you're making statements as if they are fact, and they're not fact.
It actually...
So I don't appreciate that you sit -- like, this is not what the role of a supervisor is.
I have to say, I'm incredibly uncomfortable as well. This is not a political event.
Like, you sit here and...
And to say we -- putting saying "we" and organizing puts me in a really uncomfortable situation. Because we represent everybody. So I'm not really comfortable with where we're going with this.
One at a time.
I'll be done in a minute, and then you guys will have an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say that the FBI found out it was true that it was this group, and they're very well-known. And I want to make sure that when we're looking at pointing our fingers, we're pointing the fingers at the right people. And finally, to step back a little bit from Black Lives Matter and the movements that are going on, including the extremists, I wanted to celebrate pride. It's June. I always celebrate pride. It is a very meaningful month for me, so I just wanted to reach out to all the people supporting LGBTQ rights and say, enjoy your pride and enjoy your family and all the love that comes with pride. I also, finally, wanted to suggest that we continue our meetings through Zoom, at least have the option for people to public comment through Zoom and participate through Zoom until we at least get to a point where we don't have to worry about COVID anymore. My concern is that they're, you know, typically the people that come to our meetings as observers are older people, and I would love to have them be able to fully participate, whereas right now it's only like a one-sided participation.
I think Dr. Damsker pretty much dictates and provides a lot of the outlines in terms of what people's interactions can be. And I'm really comfortable with referring any health officials in terms of what the protocol should be, rather than us determining what we're comfortable with. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. But I like deferring anything to the medical -- I talked about that last time, that, you know, because we don't want to create mass hysteria. We don't want to create -- we want to be accessible. I agree with you, but I think we need to be smart about it. So I refer to my other supervisors.
I'm not sure what happens after June 26th. I think we kind of go back to as normal as possible. I don't think the COVID risk is going to go away anytime soon. But at the same time, we'd like to get back to some kind of semblance of normalcy. If there is a group or some people who would want to come, but they feel compromised, or they don't want to come to this meeting live, I think we can set something up for the -- for certain individuals or certain groups of people.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to be able to have people participate?
It's unwieldy. It takes time for the staff to do it and somebody to manipulate -- I mean, to manipulate it, you know what I mean? Not to manage it. So, I mean, it's just, it's something more we have to do if we don't have to do it.
I would like to look into that a little bit further and have a discussion on whether we can move towards having more interactive as I'm looking over different organizations and different municipalities and their continued use of online access.
While we were shut down completely, we had every possible interactive system put in place for anyone to talk to us either while we're live or before the meeting or after the meeting. And we kept that going for all those meetings. So, and that's not just you not here, it's everybody not here.
Well, that was the point. It wasn't my participation, but...
I'm not sure if we still need to do that, but I'll let you do the research, and we'll talk about it.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
All right, so...
My turn.
Ryan?
Yes. So first, I apologize for losing my cool. You know, Jen, you actually started off beautifully with a great lesson about slavery, what it meant to the state of Pennsylvania, what it meant to Bucks County. But I have to tell you, you completely lost me when you started spouting off talking points, saying, "The FBI knows this, the FBI knows that." And you continue to talk about social media. It sounds like you're getting a lot of your information off of social media. I have to tell you, I've been on this board for going on nine years. It has never been more polarized until you stepped on it. I have served with Democrats and Republicans alike, and we've served together for the best interests of the people and the residents of this township. You continue to make it a two-sided thing, no matter what the issue is. And I think you're doing a disservice, not only to this board, but to the residents of the town. We represent all 20,000 people that serve in this township. And a lot of times, the things that you put forth, you have an agenda. And it's clear to me, it's clear to a lot of other people, and I take offense to how you get up behind your soapbox and say things as fact, when the fact of the matter is, they aren't. So I have to tell you that like, it's almost like we're waiting for it every meeting to hear how you're going to go off on something.
Well, apology accepted.
I didn't apologize.
I think you did.
I'm not apologizing to you. I'm letting you know how you're coming across as a representative of this township.
I appreciate your input.
And the other thing I want to say is, what I was going to start with is, I want to thank the chief and the entire department for everything they've done since March. These have been incredibly challenging times. And it's, chief, especially to you, it's really been incredible to watch you step up and demonstrate incredible leadership. When you came out with your message, everything you did through COVID, when you came out with your message, with what you presented with us today, I just want to thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, but it doesn't stop with me. It's the guys that work for me, the guys and gal that work for me. They're the backbone of this police department. Without them, my job would be 10 times harder. They make it easy for me. The only thing I have to do is just make sure, like I said, my span of control is this.
Well, I thanked them before I thanked you. I thanked them first, and then you.
I don't need thanks. I just need to make sure, number one, in COVID-19, that they're safe. And number two, with this whole use of force issues, that they don't get hurt.
Sergeant and officer, will you please convey our appreciation to your fellow fella members of your department? Thank you. Okay, Dan?
All right. So I would like to start by, Supervisor Lyons alluded to it earlier that we had interviews for the opening for our EAC board. We had two fantastic candidates, Mr. Curtis Sawyer and Mr. Eric Neal. After much deliberation about it, I would like to make the recommendation to this board for a motion to appoint Mr. Curtis Sawyer as our new EAC member.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Both great candidates, so, but, thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
All right. As is the theme tonight, a few things to say about our police and our race relations. And Supervisor Lyons, please correct me if I'm wrong. Was our guest tonight Ms. Schindler? Was that her last name?
Teresa Mae Schindler.
Teresa Mae Schindler, sorry. I'm terrible with names and missed it. I would just like to thank you and her for coming to speak this evening. Grew up here in Doylestown. It's, you know, I'm a white kid in a very white area. I am aware of people facing racism every day. Having someone come here, tell us today what happened to them just a few days ago, it hits home, and honestly, I'm still shaking a little bit about it. Doing my best to keep the explicatives contained out of a sense of decorum, but it has no place here in Doylestown or anywhere in this country or the world. For my other remarks, I just wanted to say I appreciate the work that our police department has been doing over the past several months in the chaos that is 2020, including the changes that we've had to make for COVID-19, things like groups trying to use our parks that are closed and protests across Bucks County and the country. To my knowledge, these issues have been handled without incident. But we are a long way from out of the woods with heightened tensions across the country and our area. It is my hope in Doylestown, we never see a police brutality incident, and that's something we've been successful at so far for reasons that the chief has laid out earlier tonight. I believe the best way to continue with this is to be proactive about it going forward. I think it would be worth for this board to consider the creation of a resident-run human relations committee that would work with members of our police and township staff to move towards goals of eliminating discrimination, intentional or unintentional, in how we run all of our township services, not just the police department. To be clear, I'm not asking for the creation of this committee right now, but I would like to gauge the board's interest in such a committee before further developing the concept and beginning discussions with those who would be involved. So I guess an informal poll if there is interest in this idea.
I'm interested in hearing more about what you're proposing.
Yeah, obviously, there's a lot more details to figure out about it, but...
Can we organize a committee that would work with the department and administration?
Right. So we can have input from our residents as well with these kinds of matters.
Relative to Doylestown Township?
Yes.
We're not talking about beyond Doylestown Township?
Yes, just for Doylestown Township, like our current existing committees.
Let's hope it's a defunct committee real soon.
That's the hope.
Okay.
I just have one last piece. It was touched on, so I'm choosing my words carefully. There, I mentioned earlier in this speech that we still have a long way to go in 2020. It should be no surprise to anyone here that we have a, what's going to be a very contested presidential election coming up. And in that background, we have the George Floyd protests, high unemployment, and COVID-19. In 2016, President Trump visited Newtown as the campaign stopped. This year, it's more than likely we would see Joe Biden and Donald Trump here in Bucks County. I would just ask that as we see things coming across social media and various groups disguising each other or saying one thing, this group's doing one thing or that group's doing another thing, to keep in mind, especially when it comes to social media, people lie, and to look at things with a critical eye. This year, we're going to see activists and, yes, possibly extremists on both sides here in Doylestown and Bucks County. So I just want to make sure that we put the proper public safety resources where they need to be as the year goes on with everything we're facing this year.
Thank you, Dan. Well said.
Well said.
Thank you. All right, is that -- I think everybody's been heard? All right, no public hearing, no unfinished business. Next item on the agenda is Bucks County Water and Sewer wants to get paid per their two requests. One, I guess, no, one dated April 20th, 2020, for tabulation number 12 in the amount of $155,830.16. Dave, do you need to comment on these, or can we just pass on without your comment?
Yeah, actually, our little subcommittee that Dan serves on with the residents from the Pebble Ridge-Wood Ridge area, who also serve on our Ways and Means Committee, met and recommended both to the board.
All right, then, well, let's do them together. Both April 20th, 2020, and June 1st, 2020. The June 1st deals with tabulation number 13 in the amount of $247,686.54. All both payable to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Is there a motion to approve both?
I'll make the motion to approve and pay Bucks County Water and Sewer.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We're closing out the Turk. Yay. Something's done here. Turk Road feasibility study, or a resolution that closing out the grant, which means all aspects of the grant have been satisfied, and we are done with this. Correct?
That is correct.
Is there a motion to close out the Turk Park feasibility study, resolution number 2216?
Motion to close out.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Land Development Hammerstein, they won another -- I take that back. Letter from Mr. Van Louveney from the Hammerstein folks wanting an extension. And their extension is tendered through July 31st to 2020.
Right. They are slated to make a presentation next Monday to the Planning Commission. And so their plan expires June 30th. Obviously, your meeting wouldn't be until middle of July, therefore, the extension is needed.
Is there a motion to approve the extension?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll look forward to hear what they have to say. Should they get past the Planning Commission?
They may need another extension.
They may need another extension. Okay. Now, we have two zoning hearing board applications, one for 149 Willow Lane, the other one for 304 Bunker Hollow. Does anybody have any concerns with either one of them? Do we need to send our solicitor to either one of them?
No, as zoning officer, I would recommend that both can be handled by our zoning hearing board.
Okay, let's pass on 149 Willow Lane. We don't need to -- we don't need to go on these. Okay, so both will go on to the zoning hearing board without Doylestown Township objecting. Okay, excellent. Treasurers' report. Did I miss anything? No? Treasurers' report for June 16th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve? You've seen it electronically.
Motion to approve the Treasurers' report.
And I'll second it. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the bills list, also sent electronically of June 16th, 2020?